February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, city council meeting. First of all, I want to welcome the Hala, West Hala World and KJIW and any other media that might be on and any guests as well. We'll welcome all of you. Real, very quick update. I can return to this in a minute because we have a guest we want to go to first, but we obviously in a, in a weather emergency, we're expecting another storm later tonight and we're anxious to see what that brings. We had our road graders out today or backhoes. They're not really road graders, but we may do. Want to thank them for what they were able to do. We, I'm getting a little tired or getting a little bit too good at this emergency order business. This is about our fourth or fifth. We're also still in a water emergency and I'll try to, if we have time, brief you more on that. We got a lot accomplished in the last couple of weeks. But in the meantime, I want to recognize, Andre, you're on here. I might let you recognize Keith Ran with Arkansas Municipal League, if you would.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, and we hadn't called Row yet. Have, Mr. Ramsey, you want to call, call Row? Thank you, Mr. Joe, sorry.
Okay, forward. Here. Franklin. Thanks, Columbia.
Here.
Etherly.
Yeah.
Rock it.
Here.
Davis. Mr. Etherly, I saw you signed in.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And thank you, Mr. Joe. Is that what you had? Mr. Columbia, is that what you were trying to remind me about? My apologies. I get, got a little carried away there, I guess. Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Okay. Mr. Valley, you want to represent, recognize or introduce our guest?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Andre Valley, City Attorney. Attorney Keith Ran is outside counsel. He's a conflict counsel, outside counsel with Arkansas Municipal League. He's handled several cases for us in the past from Weson all the way through the consolidated cities. And he represents us on the case involving Dwayne Nate Harvey versus the City of Helena, West Helena. He has been counsel on that now for a few months. So were two other lawyers before him who had, for various reasons, had to get off the case. But he's here tonight to talk to us about the current status relating to procedurally what he intends to do and he may possibly talk about the status of offers that you all know mediation before. And with that, I yield to Attorney Rhea.
Thank you, Andre. Good evening, everybody. My name is Keith Ran. I'm an attorney in Little Rock. I am not a employee of the Arkansas Municipal League, but I'm frequently used by their, by them for their outside counsel for various reasons. In this particular case, the first attorney on this case was Amanda LaFever. She represented the city and also Virgil Green. Well, when Mr. Green filed his own lawsuit against the city, then she had a, she had a conflict and she had to get off the case. So the, this case was then given to an attorney named Chris Michaels. You may all have met him at a mediation that occurred about two years ago. Chris subsequently left the private practice of law to go take another job. And so then the file was given to me. At that point, I really didn't know anything about the case. All I knew is that there was a lot of documents that I had and some that I later learned that I didn't have. I won't go through all of the boring details of it, but I'm going to try to hit some of the highlights. So Mr. Harvey, through his attorney, filed a lawsuit with multiple claims. One of the claims was that he said he did not get paid overtime pay when he actually worked overtime. He said that he was not given health insurance benefits. He was not given vacation or sick pay or holiday pay, as is required by law for police officers. He also made a claim that Virgil Green retaliated against him in violation of his civil rights. And he also made a racial discrimination claim and some other claim that, that he later dismissed. So before Mr. Michaels got off of the case, he filed a motion for summary judgment asking a former Judge Proctor to dismiss many or all of the plaintiff's claims. For various reasons, some of which involved one of the attorneys having to have surgery and then the plaintiff's lawyer had to have surgery and then the COVID-19 crisis came. The judge basically never ruled on the motions to dismiss or the motion for summary judgment. Judge Proctor, as you know, retired and basically his last act on the bench was to just summarily deny all of the motions. What that meant or what it means is that he's going to let the case go to trial. Virgil Green individually has the right to take a unusual type of appeal. It's called an interlocutory appeal. It's a taking an appeal in the middle of the case. The city doesn't have the right to do that. The new judge has set this case for trial in April, but I don't think he was aware that Virgil Green had taken the interlocutory appeal. So it doesn't make case, it doesn't make sense to try the case twice potentially. So I suspect that that date is going to come off and that the new date will be sometime after Virgil Green's appeal is completed. In the meantime, I had the opportunity to dive into this file, which was quite voluminous, and go through all of the records and try to figure out what is what. So in that process, it is my opinion that at various times through two, end of two thousand thirteen to through the end of two thousand sixteen, Mr. Harvey worked basically full-time. He only had a part-time certification, but he basically was worked consistently forty hours a week plus. So he at times worked overtime. There were times, most of the time he was paid appropriately. There were some times, I believe through human error, that he did not get paid overtime. There was at least one paycheck where he was inadvertently paid overtime pay for his entire paycheck for all of the hours. So he got a huge overpayment. When you tally it all up, at least in my opinion, it appears that he was actually overpaid a little bit by a few hundred dollars. So I don't know that the law is unclear and it's not been interpreted as to whether or not he would win on the days that he didn't get paid overtime and he would lose on the days that he did, or if it's viewed, you know, on, on the whole, for the whole time period. I don't know the answer to that and there's no law interpreting it. But that, that part of the claim, at least in my opinion, is fairly minimal. The documents show that he was offered health insurance, so I don't think that's an issue. The LOPFEE benefits, he's claimed that he did not get paid LOPFEE benefits appropriately. That may be an issue because although for about a three, three-year period, he worked full-time with, you know, I think one month or possibly two months. His LOPFEE contribution was only at the rate of a volunteer officer, which is like five or six dollars a month. Additionally, for the first year, there, there are three Arkansas statutes that were written in the nineteen sixties. They say that police officers have to be given holiday pay for all of the holidays that the city recognizes. They say that police officers have to get twenty-six a year and police officers have to get fifteen vacation days a year. Unfortunately, those laws were written back in the nineteen sixties and they just say police officer. They don't say full-time. They don't say part-time. There's no case interpreting it. So in theory, at least, a volunteer police officer who works one hour a week could be entitled to all these benefits. That doesn't make sense. But I can't say that the plain language of the statute doesn't say that. There's no cases interpreting it. So I don't know what the outcome with that would be eventually. He did not get paid holiday pay for the first year that he worked full-time. At least it appears he got holiday pay for the subsequent two years. Then he, as far as I could see, was never paid sick pay or vacation pay. As you all may recall, in two thousand sixteen, his employment was terminated and then he had a appealed it to the council and the council reinstated him, but gave him a suspension without pay. That occurred in August of two thousand and sixteen. But he was not put back to work until sometime in January of two thousand seventeen and he's claiming that he was retaliated against by the chief during that period of time for refusing to, by refusing to put him back on the work schedule. That's a swearing match. Virgil Green says that he never came to me. Who a jury will believe on that? I don't know the answer to that. Some of the claims that he has made are what are called fee switching statutes, which means that if he wins anything more than a nominal amount, the city will have to pay his attorney's fees and costs. So having said all of that, that brings me to where we are in the case now. After having done my analysis of the case, I spoke with Mayor Smith. I spoke with John Wilkerson at the Arkansas Municipal League. And I said that, given that it certainly appears the city may have some liability here, it's probably going to be best to try to get this case resolved in a manner that everybody can live with, rather than to risk a potentially bad outcome at trial. So after talking to Mayor Smith and John Wilkerson, it was determined that we would try to see if Mr. Harvey would accept the offer that had been previously made at the mediation, which occurred two years ago, which was, I think, sixty thousand dollars. That offer was, was remade to Mr. Harvey and his attorney rejected it on his behalf. It made a counteroffer of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. John Wilkerson is not interested and I don't recommend that you be interested in accepting that counteroffer. So that brings us to kind of a crossroads in the case because at this point, we either need to just gear up for trial and go see what happens or we need to try to get it resolved. There is a mechanism for trying to get people to think seriously about the shortcomings of their case and to get more serious about settlement and that, that is called an offer of judgment. There is a provision in the Arkansas Rules of Civil Procedure that say that if you make an offer of judgment to a plaintiff, they can accept that. In other words, you say, we will pay you X amount of dollars and they can accept it and it's just as if a judgment were rendered against the person making the offer. So the upside of it is that if you make an offer of judgment, say for X dollars, and the case goes to trial and the plaintiff wins, but he gets less than the amount of the offer of judgment, then you're not responsible for his fees and costs after the date of the offer of judgment. So in other words, if we make a reasonable offer of judgment to the plaintiff and he accepts it, then we're going to be in the position of having to sort out what his attorney's fees and costs are right now. On the other hand, if we make him an offer of judgment and he does not accept it and he goes to trial and even if he wins, his attorney is going to be taking the risk of working for free from this day forward. So it's a tool to encourage settlement. So I've discussed this with John Wilkerson at the Arkansas Municipal League. I've discussed it with Mark Hayes, with Mayor Smith and former Mayor Hollowell, who's also a defendant in this case, and Virgil Green through his attorneys. We are all in agreement that an offer of judgment to the plaintiff should be made in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. As I said, what that means is if they, if they accept it, we're on the hook to pay them twenty-five thousand dollars. Plus, we'll have to contend with their attorney's fees and costs. It is a risk, but it is my opinion that it is a risk worth, worth taking at this point. My analysis of the case is that Mr. Harvey is probably owed about twenty thousand dollars in benefits. I don't think that anyone is going to believe whatever his credentials were law enforcement-wise, that if you're going to work somebody forty-plus hours a week, that they're not entitled to the full-time benefits provided under the law. So as we sit here now, that is, that is the plan to, to make this offer of judgment. And if they don't accept it, then if we go to trial and they win and they get more than that, well, then we're, we're, we're back in the same position. But if they go to trial and they win and they, they get less than that, then we will not, we will be cutting our losses. So that is all I have to say on the matter and I stand for any questions.
Keith, will you also, Andre Valley, Keith, will you also explain the coverage on it when you say the offer?
Yes, yes. Okay, so another factor in this case is this. The Arkansas Municipal League Legal Defense Program provides coverage for many types of claims, but they also have different types of coverage for different types of claims. So for example, in a civil rights case where say it's a claim against a police officer for arrest without probable cause or excessive force or something like that, the municipal league's coverage in most of those cases is ninety-ten coverage, meaning that the league will pay ninety percent of any judgment or settlement and the city would be responsible for ten percent. On the other hand, in wage and hour claims, such as the plaintiff's overtime claim, the municipal league offers no monetary coverage at all. All they offer is a cost of defense. On other types of claims for employment discrimination or retaliation, those types of things that are employment rated, related, the league generally offers fifty-fifty coverage. So there's some question about, you know, who would owe what, depending on the outcome of, of the trial. For settlement purposes, the league has agreed to pay fifty percent of any settlement amount and the city would be responsible for the other fifty percent. So that, that, that is the issue with regard to coverage.
Keith, could you also explain that the citizen, what what was Hay said about paying on the full claim and then the city paying the league?
Right, so the City of Helena, like many small cities in Arkansas, especially these days, is, is having financial problems. That's, that's not unusual. Mark will work with the city to work out a time payment for any contribution that the city would be required to make towards the settlement. I, I don't think that Mark stated to me any specific terms along that, but, but I, I think in good faith, he will try to work something out so that this does not create a huge financial hardship for the city.
Thank you, Keith.
And if any of you have any questions, I stand, stand for your questions. Okay, well, then the plan is that I will convey that to the plaintiff's attorney and then I will advise the mayor and Andre of the response that we get.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And I want to make sure I understand this correctly. If we settle for twenty-five or let's say if, if accept, it's accepted, if the offer of twenty-five is accepted and we pay, the city pays fifty percent. If the offer is not accepted, I'm a little fuzzy on who pays if we go to trial. It's possible that we pay the entire amount if there's a judgment in it.
Well, it depends on the claim. If, if it's a wage and hour claim, there is no coverage. So if he were to win on the Arkansas Minimum Wage Act claim, and it's called Minimum Wage Act, but it encompasses the overtime claim, then there's no coverage at all, other than cost of defense. So, but, but you know, for, for settlement purposes, the league has agreed to pay fifty percent.
Okay.
And so to be clear, you know, if they accept the twenty-five thousand dollars, then, then they, his attorney is going to make a claim for attorney's fees and costs. And so that, that's going to have to be dealt with. But considering if we go to trial and have done nothing to try to give ourselves a little insurance, then potentially we might be on the hook for even more.
Okay. I just, I was just trying to be sure on the, on the backside of it, if it does or doesn't. So we'll know in about ten days whether or not they accept it.
Right, that's, that's right. The rule is that once it's conveyed, they have ten days to make up their mind. If after ten days they haven't done anything, then it's deemed that they do not accept it. And so most of the time that this happens, in fact, all of the time that I've used this as a tool to get a case settled, it wound up being a settlement rather than a judgment. Because most of the time, people aren't interested in having a piece of paper that says judgment. What they want is, you know, green stuff. And so this is just a tool to get people to think seriously about the case. Well, Mayor, if, if no one else has anything, then I will, I will take care of conveying this offer of judgment and then I will be back in touch with you.
Right. Make sure one more time, no other questions or Andre, or Mr. Valley, do you have anything?
Basically, one thing that I, he's not asking for permission to go forward because this is less than the sixty thousand that you all have previous authorized at mediation. This is thirty-five thousand on list. So he's not asking for the council approval on that. We're just advising you in the professional judgment that he's going forward with that. He wanted to keep you informed as a client. Some of y'all, it takes me, if we needed to prove it, but he, he's just, this is less than what you've already offered Mr. Harvey.
Right. So Mr. Ran, thank you for your excellent analysis and all your hard work on this case on our behalf and we appreciate your time tonight and we look forward to hearing back and seeing what happens next.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members, and thank you, Andre. I will be back in touch.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. And thank you, Mr. Valley. The, the next, the actual first thing on our agenda that went out is a revised, revised base pay ordinance for equipment operators and Mr. Valley, I think that revised base pay ordinance, were you going to handle that?
Yes, I don't have a copy. I was trying to prepare that. You all discussed it last, last council meeting. Sorry, getting the phone call. Y'all, y'all discussed it last council meeting regarding Mr. Jones's requests and Mr. Jones had language regarding thirteen, fourteen, fifteen an hour and various specifics. I have not seen the ordinance myself, so I would ask Mr. Turner to explain what he typed into it because he was going to do the language that's talking with Mr. Jones. Mr. Turner, are you there?
Yeah, I haven't talked to Mr. Jones about it. And so I haven't done anything with it. I know the last time we discussed it, you guys said that we need to be, have some clarification on how many years of experience and all I've heard is that they haven't come to any clear understanding of what the experience requirements would be, if the experience requirements were before hire or what the rate of pay go up as a consequence of working for the city. So not, I haven't gotten any details on any of those specifics.
The, the last we had was the, you all voted that for the people already here that it would go in and affect immediately for them for rates and so forth. But you told us to address the base pay issue and I don't have any clarity with Jones. The man with Jones went back and forth in the last meeting just talking about the parameters. And I actually need to review the minutes to see what exactly you all decided on that.
They didn't decide, Mr. Valley.
Oh, well, that's, that's, that's my lack of clarity. Thank you.
Mr. Ms. Crockett and I had discussed that we were confused as to if we hire a new person, are we talking about his years of experience, zero to one, that, that he would start at thirteen or if he's got five years' experience, do we start him at fifteen? We didn't, it's not in the minutes as to what we do with that.
Yeah, I think Ms. Ramsey clarifies it. I think the issue and we, we did listen to the minutes or we listened to the meeting, I'm sorry, and we were talking about thirteen-dollar starting pay, fourteen dollars after a year, fifteen dollars after two years and to amend the base pay ordinance not tonight to show thirteen-dollar starting pay. But the issue, as she pointed out, was do we give credit for experience when they are hired for that, you know, two years or three years' experience? I don't recall great, you know, that that was what we were thinking. I think we were thinking thirteen starting. But
Go ahead, Mayor.
And that's how, that's how it was in the audio of the meeting. So, but I think the issue is do we give fourteen, fifteen based on experience when we hire them or do we start everybody out at that thirteen? And was there an issue about thirteen dollars and ten cents versus thirteen dollars even maybe? But other than that, that's the issues. I understand it. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes, oh, yes. As far as I understand it, I agree. I think that's the issue, but we didn't have any, any further direction. And I know we've had a lot of equipment well since the year. And so I think that, that it had to be defined because the base pay would be set in the, as you all are aware, but just for those who are not on the council and then administration. It was set the, the base salary for a poor person coming in. So we need that before we drafted the base pay. But as relates to those who are already there, you all discussed that in detail and, and I don't know how that applies to each one of your employees, but you all voted that those things would take effect, whatever you discussed in that meeting would take effect there for existing employees.
I guess.
Go ahead, Mayor.
No, I was just going to say the same thing. The direction on the starting pay for the base pay ordinance. So anybody just chip in.
Sandy Rams here. Mr. Jones pointed out during the discussion that if he found an operator that had say five years' experience, there's no way that man would come here for thirteen dollars an hour. And that may be something to think about because he would probably need, if he's got that much previous experience, he may need to start at fifteen.
I agree. I agree.
This is.
Trying to draw people here to the city to employ them and that would be a low salary to start if you already had experience outside of the city. I think it should, we should do something as far as previous experience is concerned.
I agree with Mayor. I agree with that.
Any other comments?
Well, my understanding was that as like Ms. Davis just said, I thought it did not depend on if the experience was with the city or not. I thought it was just if you had, if I worked for Davis Construction and drove backhoe and all of that and I came with five years' experience, I thought it was that we would start them out at fifteen.
Well, that's the direction we're looking for. And I, I think that you all did discuss. I think everybody agrees that it was not based on city experience with the city. It was based on overall experience for a CDL driver or the heavy equipment operator, whichever one it was. But the issue is with, what's turning on, I needed with the rationale as to what's thirteen dollar, what's fourteen dollar, what's fifteen dollar for the purpose of the base pay? And that's what we had discussed is that parameter wasn't completely defined for us to draft the ordinance. So all we were saying. But did I yield to anybody?
I thought it was, and this is just me, zero to one was thirteen, two to, two and three was fourteen and three plus was fifteen. I might be wrong, but I think that's what I remember.
Well, on the starting part of it, I, I think what, what would y'all like to do on the start? I guess the other question is how do we document an income? Of course, we could document the people here on Pyro, but how about the new hires? How do we document? on Piro, but how about the new hires? How do we document that they have the experience that they say they have would be one question. I guess you leave that up to us, but do y'all have any input? Or we could put that in writing, I guess.
Do y'all, do y'all check the reference? If they've been employed somewhere before coming, I, I mean, that's what, we need a human resource person for to call and check reference. If the person has been working for AAA Cooper for five years and want to get off the road and come back home, you, the human resource director or personnel person will call and say, hey, John Henry worked for you all, and I'm trying to verify his employment. How long did he work for you all? If that pays out, then you decide, you go from there. Because if somebody comes and says, oh, I worked for John Wayne Construction, and I drove a backhoe, but you know, that, you can't call John Wayne Construction to verify that. So you gotta be in a bath before you give them that kind of money. You ought to verify employment and years of experience. Because what if they only worked six months and told you on the application, they lied and said they worked there five years? So that's, that's where the human resource person comes in, or, or however you all want to do it. But you want to make sure you validate their claim. If, if they're saying they work for that construction company or AAA Cooper or Tyson's, you want to make sure that you be able to have a door that you can call Tyson and verify that. They say, they said, oh, they, they see it, but it's, I mean, if they say they work for, we should be, they should show proof, and we should verify that. But that's what they have done before we get that kind of money away.
That's true. I agree. Possible to have, what we would have with or without experience, I mean, as far as the salary range.
Well, Ms. Crockett, I think, was pointing out, I can't remember it this way, zero to one, and when we listened to it also, but zero and one was thirteen. So I guess, really, starting with no experience, thirteen. I think on listening to it, it was one year, fourteen, two years, fifteen, but it could have been two to three years, fifteen.
Mayor, Joe St. Columbia, I agree with some, Mr. Franklin, I, I think we need verified. And of course, if a gentleman that we're going to employ lied on, on the application, I think we need to not hire the gentleman. We don't want a bunch of people trying to lie to us about their wages.
Well, why don't we leave it, well, unless there's anybody else that wants to chime in, and you can still chime in, but we can just leave it that verification will be requested via documentation by the applicant for anything, anything more than a year's experience as a heavy, heavy equipment operator. Shouldn't be too much for someone who's done it, I would think, or other verification is determined at the time, because for some reason, we can't foresee they couldn't get documentation, I guess. How does that sound? Mr. Valley, how's that sound, or Ms. Ramsey?
That's, I, I, I think it's administrative issue to verify it anyway. I think the most frankly, Mr. St. Columbia, correct? That, that simply, once we put the language in there, it'd be up to the administration to verify through the mayor's office, through HR, or, or through, or through all three, with, with the Department of Public Works, to verify that the person, that the applicant is being truthful.
So, does it, let me put it another, is there any objection to drafting the base pay ordinance along those lines of starting at zero to one year, thirteen dollars an hour, two years, fourteen dollars an hour, three to four, or we want to say three or four, because I mean, it could be.
Why don't you, with the, with the, with the, why don't you check with the market before you do that? Because see, think about it. If you got a CDL driver that's been to get out of school, what, since you got such a good relationship with PC College, why don't you check with them to see what, what, what their starting pay, what, after getting out of school, so you can figure out how much would you pay those people with, with, with heavy equipment operators, CDs, or whatever? You have a relationship with the college, and we get the college involved in this, so you can determine, okay, this is what the college offered. They have that class. It's a fair, a fair market price. We can't compete with Memphis or South Haven, but let's see what a, what a person gets. Talk to the college and see what, I mean, what's the going rate? So you know, I mean, do you go down a dollar? Do you go up a dollar? Do you go fifty cents? How, how would you, give yourself some wiggle room with this before you just finalize it? Talk to some people. I'm pretty sure that you, you, you know people, Mayor, that you could talk to and bring us back some information. Like Mr. Valley said, it's, it's an administrative issue, so why don't you all figure the number out, and then we can say yay and nay to it. Go back to start, go back to starting board and just talk to somebody at the college, because they have these type of programs, and they got the CDL drivers and, you know, check with Marianna, check with Forest City, check with Marvel, check with the surrounding area and see what's the going rate. So that maybe if these people know that you go give fourteen or thirteen dollars, or whatever, twelve dollars starting, now whatever, they say, hey, well, hell of an offer this, let's just see, why don't you go back and see what you can find out? They report back there, so we can say, okay, Mayor, that, that sounds pretty reasonable.
Mr. Franklin, I got a practical question. Are you asking for, for us to draft a one that's based on what he finds, and then he can discuss at the next meeting of how you practically want to do it? Are you asking?
Yeah.
Because the practical thing that I see is, he's gonna come back another meeting and report back to you all, then we have to wait another time to draft one. I'm just asking the practical ability of how you want to do it. Do you want us to just want the mayor to get the numbers, we put it in, and then he presents that to you all?
Yeah, he can do that. I mean, you know, everybody got an email, I think, to Ms. Crockett. I mean, I'll be happy to deliver her package to make sure that we get it on time, to make sure that we could be, the, the fastest he want to expect is, is up to him. He can do it tomorrow, he can do it whenever he so chooses, long as we get to see what the, what the going market is. Before we, I mean, what, what if you shoot yourself in the foot and give more? What if you shoot yourself in the foot and give less? By the college having this kind of program, he should be able to network with the college and see, when they get out of school, what is the offering rate? And we can decide from, from there, instead of, instead of us brainstorming, trying to figure out, this is an administrative issue, right? So let the mayor talk to the college, or people in his inner circle to figure out, hey, can they go and do some reporting on this and come back and report to the council? Or he can email and say, hey, this is what I found, and I think we should go here. But show us some black and white. Show us some paper proof. This is what is going. So when people come to us about the salary, we can say, well, the mayor went out and looked at this entity, and they said, this is what the starting rate is, and this is what Forest City or Marianna, Hugh, Eli, what their glory, and this is what we're going to try to be competitive with those surrounding areas. So we can, like, okay, this is what, this is what the mayor got. Do we go up a dollar, down a dollar, or we right in between, so that we can get qualified workers?
I'd like, I'd like to also add to that. Of course, fresh out of college, they wouldn't have any experience at all, so they would be getting the minimum, whatever we said at that time. That makes sense.
Okay, well, we will check, well, is there, are there any other comments from anybody else before we move on?
And, and, Mr. St. Columbia, you're absolutely correct. They'd be fresh out of school, but if they're gonna come with us, at least the mayor can decide. Mayor, or, or, and say, well, hey, I feel like since they're fresh out of college, and they, and, you know, you can look at, you know, an incentive you give them. You know, if they do a year, or they do, after ninety-eight probation period, you have to give some kind of incentive, say, well, we appreciate you coming, or at least if they, whatever it is, give some kind of incentive for working for us, if it's a, 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 a fifth that I signed about, whatever it is, try to make sure we can get those people here.
So is it, is Andre Valley, is, is it a consensus of the council that wants the mayor to get these numbers, and we draft the base pay, we just send it to you all for the next council meeting?
That's fine. That's fine, Mr. that. And even though, what, what, before I said anything, but department heads should also be able to verify employment with the people, the, the department heads, check your department head, because see, that's another thing, if department heads are checking credentials, then it was the mayor, you shouldn't have to do that. Make sure your department head are aware of that, and they go out and they, they talk, because they, you, you just, well, I just think the department head is gonna be overseeing that person day-to-day operations. The department head should be able to talk to somebody.
I don't hear something.
That's correct. Department heads have a lot of input into this. For example, we're trying to replace Roy, or we have been, and, you know, going through this, you know, as we speak. So, okay, any other comments before we move on, and we'll go talk to the department heads and others, and we'll report back. Okay. All right, there's nothing else, then we'll, we'll move on to the next one on the agenda that was sent out by Ms. Ramsey. And then it's the update on the crime committee. Mr. Ethely, are you, are you, you're recognized.
So, yeah, I had intended to try to get everybody to meet this week, and based on the forecast and what's been going on, I kind of delayed that. And it seems like that was a pretty good decision at this point. What I'm gonna try to do is see if we can all meet on Monday. And so I'm gonna try to contact everybody, and I want to remind the council that the council is, is welcome and invited to be a part of this. I'll get you out some kind of email or notice after I talk to everybody in the next twenty-four hours or so, and let you know, but we'll try to do something on Monday. And I needed to ask a question also. Does this meeting need to be recorded? Is this one that we'll have to record also? And I wasn't sure about that. And if so, then, Ms. Halbert, I will get with you and confirm the time and start, the start time.
Mr. Ethely, if, if any other committee members, is your, is your committee with private citizens, though, right?
Yes.
And so it wouldn't be a city council meeting, you're just having a, a, a meeting for yourself. But if council members, or you're inviting them to be there, you've got to record it, because it becomes a meeting of any other council member there, and you are talking about city business. So yes, it would have to be recorded.
Well, I'm inviting and anticipating and hoping that everybody takes part, so yes, we'll need to record.
It is a law that if two or more members are together, that constitutes a meeting.
Yeah, yes, sir. If they're discussing city business at all, it constitutes a meeting. Yes, sir. So under the new FOI laws from last year, it would have to be recorded.
Okay, any other questions of Mr. Ethely, or Mr. Valley, or comments about the crime committee? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ethely. So Monday, and we'll, we'll work with you on the other logistical issues there as well. The next item on the agenda is the landfill bond renewal. I don't have, I believe it was emailed out. Ms. Ramsey, if you don't mind, I'm gonna call on you about that. Do you mind?
Mr. Valley understands the bond issue. Each year in March, the latter part of March, we have to get a surety bond on the landfill. We used this company last year and the year previous. The premiums are within range that they were last year. One premium is five thousand five eighty-eight for a hundred eighty-six thousand two fifty. Then second premium is forty-six thousand two sixty-two for one million five forty-two seventy-seven. We have to prove we have this bond, not only to ADQ, but to Bank of the Ozarks. We don't have to pay it until March twenty-fourth, but I hope to get it approved sooner, so that I could get it off when the landfill account had money.
So the question, Mr. Valley.
Yes, this is something that's mandatory, not just with, it's mandatory for keeping the bond and mandatory also for, for ADQ. Years ago, they used to make us post all cash, and consolidated cities, we had to come up with a million, one point eight million dollars in cash as part of the initial bond. But since then, they've allowed us to just do surety bonds, and it's paying annual premiums, which is far cheaper than having the actual cash. If we don't do this, then we're gonna come up with actual cash to make sure that's a bond. The purpose of the bond is closure and post-closure is to ensure that there's sufficient monies there to make sure that if landfills shut down for any reason, that it would not become a, a, a site where the federal government, the EPA, or the state, through Arkansas Department of Commerce, had to come in and use what would be super fund funds to clean up ahead of the site. And so that's, that's the general purpose of it, but it's something that we need to approve, and I suggest you approve whichever one, this Ramsey or Mr. Mayor or Mr. Turner says the best.
Mr. Valley, we have to do both of these. They're two small bonds.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
It'd be like a total of, like fifty-one thousand, roughly.
My question is, are these premium rates of what's it were last year, the same rates?
Yes, sir. Just a few hundred dollars difference.
Okay. I move, we move forward on the issuing of these bonds, and that we move forward with this. I make the motion.
Mr. St. Columbia makes the motion that we approve the law, the landfill bond renewals that were emailed out by Ms. Ramsey for this year, for the coming year, for the, for the Illinois, tell them the Phillips County landfill. Is there a second?
Second.
I think Ms. Davis seconded the motion. Are there any questions or further discussion about the motion? If not, Caldwell.
Crockett?
Yes.
Ethely?
Yes.
Forward? Franklin?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Forward? Five, yes.
My, motion passes. Thank you very much. The next item of business on the agenda is an invoice regarding a lift truck at the landfill for twelve thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. And this is, this was an invoice. Ms. Ramsey did, is this the one that talked about getting us out of the? I don't, and I don't know. I was just texting to see if anybody was on, who could address this more, but I could not write this check. It was over my spending limit. I could be mistaken. I don't remember that we approved it or pre-approved it. And, and to be honest, it'd be better to have one of our department heads on to to discuss it further, if you have any significant questions about it. Ms. Ramsey, do you want to add anything to that?
No, that's the one on the excavator that we had to pull out, and then they had to work on it.
So would you like to? Do you have any question? I mean, do you have anything you want to add? To that? I mean, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I just want to make sure if you do.
Now, that's this, no, it's just the excavator that we had to get the big truck to pull it out of the mud, and then the lift truck people came down and repaired it.
I don't, I don't recall being, I think this was an after-the-fact invoice that went over my spending limit and well over it. And so it needed to be approved, and.
So would you like to wait until you get your department head on, on the call, or we can table to the next meeting, so when your department head can better explain, since you, you're not, you, you don't know? You want to wait till you get them?
I know it was, it was over my spending limit, which is why I guess we put it on the agenda, because I said we had to get it approved, because I didn't recall approving it. And I didn't feel comfortable signing the check. And, oh, yeah, I, I'd feel more comfortable if we had.
You could, if you want, you can just.
Somebody, he could, he could more specifically address it, so.
Well, we can table to the next meeting.
We'll move that to the next meeting.
But hasn't the money already been spent?
Well, I didn't sign the check, so I guess not.
But it, but the, the work has been done.
Yes.
So I don't see the purpose of table because we're gonna have to pay the bill anyway. But I go with whatever y'all say.
Well, I don't, I don't mind tabling it if it helps answer questions, which.
Well, well, Miss, Miss Cracker, I don't have any.
I don't want to pretend to have answer if I don't have answers. I'd rather have somebody who, who, um. Was there at the time, frankly. Rather than trying to wing it, but. But that's why it's on the agenda. It's over my spending limit and I didn't, I didn't sign it. This work has been done.
Well.
Uh, you still want to wait competitive bidding, so you need to bring it back in the house. Uh, I'm not at City Hall, so I can't draft ordinance tonight. All my city emails go to my city computer, this at City Hall. I try to keep my, my stuff separate, so I couldn't draft ordinance tonight for you related to that anyhow. But the, you're going to have an ordinance waiting for the business because it's above seventy-five hundred dollars anyhow.
Good point. I think I just, it's obviously been a pretty busy couple of weeks. And I know at one point I said that, um. I said that I couldn't sign it and I wasn't aware of it being approved, so I didn't, if we needed to put it on the agenda, but I hadn't, I hadn't come. Prepared for it, uh, or to make sure somebody was here. So my apologies for that.
Yeah, one practical, one practical question I have. Could you give us the age of this? How, how long ago was this?
I don't think it was that long ago. Maybe the last sixty days, Ms. Ramsey, something like that. Thirty to sixty.
I, I would just ask them for purpose of payment, so we wouldn't get sued or anything like that. That's, that's all.
It might have even been in the last thirty days. It's fairly recent.
Yeah, the invoice is dated January twenty-ninth. The work was done the twenty-sixth.
That's number. So. If, if there is anybody, I can't see everybody without taking some time to swap through here, but if anybody's here who. Who can answer any more questions about or discuss it, go ahead and speak up. So I think, anyway, Mr. Valley's right. We'd have to waive competitive bidding, so that means we'd have to put it on the next meeting anyway, so. Uh, let's just make sure, Ms. Ramsey, we get it on the next agenda and I'll try to make sure we're better prepared and have the. The ordinance, uh, get Mr. Valley, uh, to get that competitive bidding waived and, uh. Also to be able to answer questions about it. And I think if we pay it quickly thereafter, I, I think we'll still be okay.
Okay.
If there aren't any other questions or comments about that, we're gonna move on and come back with a bidding. Uh, ordinance and also somebody can answer more questions about it. Uh, the last two things, Ms. Ramsey, I have on the agenda and again, um, my apologies for, um. We're not as prepared as we usually are because of all the weather conditions we've had. But we had minutes on there and I don't believe we have a treasurer's report. I'm not sure we have minutes because I just signed a bunch of them and I haven't seen you since all the snow, so I don't know that you have the minutes to put. But, but that's what we have on there. Ms. Ramsey, do, do we have any minutes?
Yes, sir. We have several sets of minutes. Uh, some of them are actual meetings, some are just workshop. That's why we have, why I sent out so many. And since Mr. Valley says a workshop is like a meeting, uh, I thought we'd go ahead and approve everything if you don't mind.
Would you go through those? Cause I don't have those in front of me.
I have, uh, I have in front of me a workshop meeting, January the twelfth. Motion that we approve that meeting, uh, minutes of that meeting.
Okay, there's a motion. Uh, by Ms. Ms. St. Columbia that we adopt the minutes from, it's a workshop.
Yes, for January twelfth.
January the twelfth. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis seconded the motion. Any other discussion or questions about the motion? If not, call the row.
St. Columbia.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Ford. Davis.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Etherly.
Yes.
Five, yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Um, net, is there, what's the next set?
Mr. Mayor, I also have a, me, a virtual workshop meeting held on January the nineteenth. I move that, uh. Minutes of that meeting be approved.
St. Columbia makes adoption of the minutes from the workshop of January nineteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis seconds the motion. Any other discussion or questions about the motion? If not, call the row.
Crockett. St. Columbia.
Yes.
Etherly.
Yes.
Ford. Franklin.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Crockett. Uh, yes, ma'am. Miss.
Yes, yes, yes.
All right. Thank you. I had five, yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Is there another set?
Yes, sir. Council meeting February first, where you pass the budget. That's all it's on.
We got, we've got a, a, a. May, council meeting January twenty-first.
Oh, do we? Okay, I'm sorry.
I make a motion that we approve those minutes as written.
Mr. St. Columbia moves that we adopt the minutes from January twenty-first, city council meeting has written, written and. Ms. Ramsey, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Etherly takes the motion. Any other questions or comments about the motion? If not, call the row.
Hey, everyone was there except, uh, Ms. Davis and Ms. Ford, so that will be, um, Etherly.
Yes.
St. Columbia.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Ford and Davis were absent at that meeting.
Okay, I have, I have another council meeting February the first. Uh, the virtual meeting.
The only thing that we did there was pass the budget and everyone was present.
On February the first, I'll make a motion that we approve those minutes.
Mr. St. Columbia moves that we adopt the minutes of February first. Um, as written and submitted. Uh, Ms. Ramsey, is there a second?
Second.
Who is that? I'm sorry, Mr. Etherly.
Yes. That, that was me.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Etherly seconded the motion. Any other questions or comments about the motion? If not, call the row.
Davis.
Yes.
Forward.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Etherly.
Yes.
St. Columbia.
Yeah.
Crockett.
Yes, yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. St. Columbia, if you let me do this one, the next meeting is February the second. It has the motion in there dealing with the landfill and the amount of starting pay. Uh, could we wait and do that until, uh, the, we do the base pay ordinance at the next meeting showing that it's for the. Number of years worked or whatever, after you do your survey?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll just move that one to the next agenda then.
Yeah, maybe the last one.
Yes, sir.
Okay, are we caught up otherwise?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Please it all up. Okay, the last item on the agenda is the treasurer's report, but I think Mr. Turner and I spoke earlier and with the weather conditions, but Mr. Turner, you're recognized anyway.
Yeah, uh, I had most of the information, but I didn't get a chance to put the, um. Budget information into the report, into the accounting system, so it's not gonna include that, so I just wanted to get that to you later, once I included the. Uh, budget. Into the accounting software. And so I just didn't get a chance to do it the last couple of days.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner.
I have a.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I have a question, uh, we, when we was looking at the budget, Mr. Turner, I noticed that, um. We had, uh, some money in the budget for, uh, let me get my paperwork. I saw ninety thousand dollars for the water department, uh, cell phone, uh, telephone system. Yeah, I'm sorry about the, I, we had ninety thousand dollars for the, for the water department's phone systems, phone service. Then we had, um. I see we got fifty thousand dollars in donations. Uh, let me get together. Okay, take my questions, uh, on page four of the budget, we got twenty-five thousand dollars for animal shelters. On page four, we got thirty-five thousand dollars, I mean, thirty thousand dollars for donations. Then we got forty-seven thousand dollars for supplies, then another twelve thousand dollars. And then, um. Are we, uh, with the core engineers, do we, are we gonna pay that fifty thousand dollars to the poor core of engineers? No, I'm sorry. I mean, I, I was gonna give you all what I saw. Uh, I've been going, I, I'm not through with it. But that was, uh, the, uh, professional services. We got a, another for computer service. Um, mayor, I'm trying to see, how do we get seventy-two thousand dollars for computer services? And then we got, uh, another professional services on page eighteen for sixty-two thousand dollars. And, uh. I'm just looking, we got, in the budget, I, I know we were trying to pass a budget to, uh, make sure we could stay open. But I encourage the council members to, to, if they would help me with this, we need to start going through this budget to look at some things because. Uh, for the animal shelter, I see that we got twenty-five thousand dollars for that. And then we have the code enforcement, who is the animal, animal person. Uh, so are we gonna keep the code enforcement as the animal person and also pay the animal shelters twenty-five thousand dollars? And there's thirty thousand dollars in donations. Mr. St. Columbia, uh, and I, and more, we're joining these customers here. We did, I thought we were giving donations because we cut off the churches and we have not paid the Boys and Girls Club. The twelve thousand dollars, we were supposed to pay them because that's why they got the army back over there. And this, uh, I see some of the miscellaneous, uh, for the. One for fifty, I think, I think that's the core of it is, but it's sixty-six thousand. And then for his professional service, IT services. And on the page eighteen. For the sixty-two. And the water department, then that, and the parks and rent, that's another thing. We don't have a park and recreation, so what we need with thirty-six thousand dollars for playground equipment. I'm just going through everything from now when it comes to this budget, because I want to make sure that, that we, we passed it. And, uh, you know, things are sometimes put in the budget and, and we, we, and by the city council meeting, over finances, I want to make sure that. We are aware of it. I, uh, I've tried to reach out to other customers to see if they were aware of it, but with this playground equipment. Uh, we need, uh, for parks to rent, we don't have that in department. And, uh, then another thing, we're still paying, uh, the bills over at the armory in Helena. Uh, Mr. Attorney, this don't have anything to do with you, but mayor, have we entered into a contract with somebody? Have you entered into a contract with somebody? About the army over in Helena, because, uh, it is some activity going on over there. And I remember you said you was gonna get back with us when, when you had a chance to write a lease agreement. Uh, we have not got their lease agreement back, but I'm, I have, I'm aware that something is going on over there. But I'm sorry to draft off, uh, drift off there, but that's the thing about that as well. But Mr. Turner, these things, animal shelter, donation of page four, thirty thousand dollars. And forty-seven thousand dollars in supplies, and then another twelve, uh, twelve, four, twelve thousand for office supplies. Again, is the port authority and court, uh, the port authority sixty-six thousand for expenses. And, uh, core of engineers and this professional service, IT. Uh, then the sixty-two for another professional service and the water department and, uh. Parks and Recreation. That was what I found last night. I called some, uh, some people last night late and I'm sorry, but those were my questions, Mr. Turner.
Did you, did you just want me to kind of, uh, look into those things or kind of answer them? Uh, some of them I can't because I don't have the budget in front of me. I, you know, I wasn't, I didn't get, haven't had a chance to get down to the office. The last couple of days, but.
What?
Uh, a, a couple of things I can kind of answer, uh, the twenty-five thousand dollars on the. Animal shelter were just projected revenues. If we ever get an animal shelter up and running, those were just. A projection of possible fees that we would get for whatever services we were providing. Um, licensing fees or, uh, other little things, or whatever the city may charge for fines, whatever, I think, things like that. So that's what the twenty-five thousand dollar in revenue was for. That was just an estimate, uh, possible revenues that we may. Receive if we did open up the shelter, uh, the thirty thousand dollars, uh. And donations, those aren't donations to someone, those are donations from someone. Uh, typically when I, if I have, uh, if we, we can't donate anything, but those would be contributions, but take legally, we can't, city can't. Uh, donate the fund, so those thirty thousand dollars are the, 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 the donations from the port authorities for the salaries, for the police chief. Uh, fire chief. Uh, another thing, and then I'm, I'm gonna ask this one right quick, uh, about the. You said parks and recreation. I'm sure that the page that you stated was so, it was far back, so I'm thinking that was in tourism. I'm not necessarily sure if it said, uh. Playground equipment on the budget, but if it's in parks and recreation, uh, tourism, use the contributes money to the swimming pool. And they pay water, the water bill for the swimming pool and, and the electricity, uh, on the pumps. And for the concession stands and things like that, so, uh. I mean, I, I have to actually, I don't have my hands on the budget right now to actually look at what you're looking at, but those are a lot of other, um. Expenses that are associated with. Operating the swimming pool. And since you said, I think you said page eighteen or whatever, that would probably be. Uh, tourism and they contribute to, to the expenses for running the swimming pool. Uh, some of the other things I just have to look at. If there's anything in particular, I may be able to tell you, but like I said, I don't have the budget in front of me right now. But those, those are just a couple of things that I could answer just right off the top of my head.
Okay, so, so with this, uh, animal shelter, so can we, I mean, cause we're, we're, it, it, it had been brought to my attention. Anybody asked on the council, the mayor had made a mention about, uh, an animal shelter, so I, you know. We tried to save money after we, 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 we only had anybody, uh, that I know of catching dogs besides the animal shelter. But, um, okay.
Mr. Franklin, Mr. Franklin, I had that, that, now that was just, uh, something that was planned, we hoping to, and so the expenses. That you see in the budget associated with the animal shelter would, are just expenses that we, uh, thought may be incurred. Uh, just starting it out and, uh, some of the, uh, the revenue that you see is just what we projected if we did have an, an animal shelter. So that was kind of wishful thinking on both parts.
Okay. Uh, then I was looking at, right, we have a lot of, uh, on page fifteen, that there's a lot of. Uh, professional. Professional services. Uh, and I was gonna kind of wanna talk about that, it's where we have a lot.
Say on page fifteen, uh, what, what, what's at the top, what fund is that at the top of the page?
That's gonna be at the, uh, street fund.
Uh, I couldn't, yeah, I'll have to kind of look at my spreadsheet and tell you exactly what. Because I do have, I take notes when I'm preparing the budget, so, um. There are notes that I have that tells me exactly what I was looking at. I mean, why I projected that amount. And so like I say, right now, I just don't have it in front of me right now.
And then I, 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 you know, just, just looking, uh. Like, right here, the landfill, right here, we, we got this called professional services management and consultant for sixty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's field and fields and associate, those are, that's the engineer, the landfill engineer.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, that's why, that's why I, I got beside that. And then I see, um. Yeah, I I mean, I I that's why that's why I I got beside that. And then I see um. Okay, cuz in a in a lot in a lot of this, I've been going through, looking at like you have, we have a lot of. Uh computer website expenses that you have like right here on uh this could be tourism. You got right here miscellaneous and uh it's gonna be nineteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Yes, so some of those things, now that may be uh the tourism. Spend some money on the the Christmas trees and Christmas decorations. Most of that, when you see things like that, I'm I'm pretty sure that that's what that is. Those are the expenses associated with uh uh the holiday season.
I see where it has uh decent, yeah, then I see where you have uh other professional service for twenty twenty thousand dollars. That's the. The tourism as well. I see twenty thousand dollars for professional services. Uh I see. Contracted with, okay. Our playground equipment, eighteen thousand dollars.
Is that what it says, playground equipment?
Yes, sup- supplies, playground equipment, eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay, that may have been in an old budget. I have to look at that and I can look into it for you. I just can't remember off the top of my head.
They they uh they got uh miscellaneous expenses. I see where it says pledge, ten thousand dollars.
But those are some of the items that some of the events and festivals. Another thing that the the tourism often pledges money to help different events. Uh and so I'm sure that that's what that is, but like I said, it's not right in front of me, but I'm pretty sure that's what that is. Some pledges that the uh Tourism Commission makes uh for for various festivals. Throughout the year.
Okay, uh then I see, uh you know, like I said, it's a lot of professional services. In each 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 department with um like one, it's the that to me. I see the bird for this delay of beer. And I see a uh. Transfer out, transfer in. And right here, again, professional services. Uh professional, so we have a lot of those and. This is cheaper, but it's twenty nine, twenty hundred dollars. That's for the uh street departments. That's for professional services.
Well, some of that, a lot of that.
No, 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 Mr. Twenty nine hundred.
Oh, okay.
And then uh you know, it's a it's a it's a lot of like, okay. It's a lot like right here. It's a lot of things that, see, even though we passed the budget, I do, I kind of wish now what I would like to see. That we start going back each month uh to look at this budget, to keep this budget in line. To look at different things because it's a lot like the mayor had said earlier, that you know, something when uh. It was like the, I think some for the lay of the about it was over his spending authority. But in the past, I know we have not approved a lot of things that the mayor has went over his spending authority. We have not approved. Am I right about that? It's still lingering after the the city council has not approved suspended that he has done.
Uh no, you're not, you're not, you're not correct about that. I'm not gonna let you finish that sentence. That's why we have. I was talking.
Every time I get to get on, so there is, there is right now, there is things that you have done in the past that we have not approved your spending. And I and I and I stand corrected. There are things that you have done that we have not approved. Mr. Valley is with, am I correct, Mr. That is thing that what that he wanted to do a cleanup budget that we did not approve his spending. Am I right, Mr. Val?
I don't know the specific detail of Mr. Franklin, uh I don't defer him with eternal all that, but the budget says that the mayor is supposed to. His spending cap is five thousand dollars, you know, business seventy five hundred. And uh you cannot engage in serial contracts. That's what your that's what your ordinance says. Right. I don't know the specific incidents that I would have preferred with Turner on that. Uh for anything like that, but it's the one that's pretty clear that serial contract is if you divide it up into other portions, uh but. Uh I don't know of any specific incident, but of course, I'm not the mayor, the council, or or uh or the treasurer or city clerk.
Well, right, well, I I can refresh. I mean, I don't mean to get out. I can refresh. Remember that not this, not this past year, but the year, the the first. Year and the second year, or the first year, that the mayor had spent over his spending and we. Y'all kept saying we do a cleanup budget and we refuse to do it because he had he had spent some money over his spending limit. And we did not approve it. So remember you always asked, can we get it to clean up the budget, to clear up the things the mayor had spent, and we didn't give it. I remember that. I I remember that clearly, Mr. Turner. Do you remember that they was asking us to clear up something? A lot of things the mayor had went over his spending limit. I ma- matter of fact, one of them is that over that Beachwood apartment. Where those streets were 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 done without council approval. And the mayor wanted to be paid, and I think we held off on that and some more things he had did over his spending limit.
I'm not exactly sure about anything in particular. I I know me and Miss Ramsey, we always, when we see a check coming through. It's over five thousand dollars. We go, we go look at the minutes and we go back and look. No, 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 I mean, but what I'm saying is that I don't know of anything in particular. And I think you may be uh getting two things conflated. It's like going over his spending limit is one thing, has a five thousand dollar spending limit. But the things I was mostly concerned with with you guys in the budget was appropriations. So we may have uh spent over appropriations. You may have appropriated uh thirty thousand dollars for supplies and we went. We spent thirty five thousand, so I was trying to get the appropriations uh in line. But not not necessarily, but not necessarily a spending limit. So that that's why I just want to make a clarification between those two things.
And 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 I but I'm 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 not the only one, and I'm pretty sure I'm I'm gonna go back and look. But I know that the mayor had over spent over his limit and came back to and said, you know, we need to pay this, and we said, no. I'm not, I'm because me and Miss Crocker had some issues with it and we didn't do it. Because you said we need to clean this up before the the next the next audit or whatever, and we did do it. So the I I I find out.
Mr. Franklin, you're filibustering the meeting.
It's a treasure report and I have the floor. Every time I get to talk, you gotta say something. I'm not taking nothing. You out of order. Every time I get to say it, some you get to you get to just japping. I'm still talking. I'm talking, Mr. Turner. I'm talking to Mr. Turner. I don't wanna hear that foolishness. I'm talking to Mr. Turner. Mr. Turner, can you can we can we still ask about this seventy two thousand dollars in IT services? So can we answer those questions about the IT service for seventy two thousand dollars, Mr. Turner? Can we ask, can you answer the question about the seventy two thousand dollars in professional service? Can you answer the question about the seventy two thousand dollars, Mr. Turner?
Clear some good time to speak. I don't wanna talk over anybody, so.
Thank you. The seventy two thousand dollars, Mr. Turner. The seventy two thousand dollars, Mr. Turner. The seventy two thousand dollars in professional services because we had a contract with seventy two thousand dollars. I think that was Mr. See it with. A contract of course, with the with the seventy two thousand dollars, seventy two thousand dollars, Mr. Turner, can you tell us? That's in professional services.
Mr. Franklin, I have to actually look at the budget to see exactly what it is. Uh I know we had. Uh we have a month to month uh country uh month to month agreement with. A IT provider, and I'm sure that that's in there, uh but it may be other things that are that are in there. So I would have, like I said, I would have to look at my uh spreadsheet. And like I said, I have all those notes in my in the spreadsheet that I have too. But I I I don't have it in front of me right now, so I couldn't tell you exactly what it is.
Well, can can you tell Mr. Turner with the perfect, who's the IT service? The 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 council has has never approved the IT service for seventy two thousand dollars.
Well, I mean, I'm not saying that that's what. We don't have a contract with anybody that says we paid them seventy two thousand dollars. Yeah, if it's an estimate. Uh based on the 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 month to month fee or whatever. I'm just trying to estimate how much it may be. And like I said, that may not all of it. With that particular entity, that particular vendor, so. Uh without me looking at the, you know, looking at my spreadsheet and looking at the information, I couldn't tell you if there was one person or two or three vendors. It sounds like I'm breaking up a little bit too, so.
Okay, I'm gonna bring this meeting back for if you can hear me. Even in a regular meeting, let alone on Zoom. There is something called legislative audit. Their job is audit what we did. You don't have to take my word for it. You don't have to take anybody's word for it. You can go onto our website and you can read the legislative audit report for fiscal year twenty nine, I think. And there is now a report. One of the things they look at is whether or not I've spent my spending limit. Or broken the state rules or our own codes regarding spending limits or uh. Having our uh. You will see in that audit report, no such finding. In twenty nineteen, that's the only one that's been completed so far. Since I've been mayor and it's on our website, full transparency. Anybody's welcome to go read it. And you will see there is nothing in there about those projects about B Street. And the reason is because they were and or under the five thousand dollars spending on, as well as the other two. So it's it's transparency. It's on our website. Anybody can see it. So I'm sorry, you can't hear me. So uh that's just. The bottom line is, the other city was like H two A S dot A R dot gov. And you'll be able to see in that audit.
But mayor, what I was trying to tell Mr. Turner is that the IT service is a serial contract. You you used to, the IT service is a serial contract that did not be was not approved by this body. That's the same thing. That's that's what I'm talking about, and I'm pretty sure the city council remembers. And you would get IT in a box. We did not approve that. That's a serial contract. You've been using IT in a box since uh crystal clear solution since you terminated that contract. So when you say this false allegation, remember we did not approve that. You've been studying spending that money. So don't get mad. So you can't, um you tried to mute me, but I'm still here. So cuz you know you don't want me to tell the truth on all the stuff that you're doing. So you can mute me if you want. I was I'm I'm still telling that you are doing this uh serial contract. You're spending money that you have not been authorized to spend, and when somebody call you to the car, you wanna get loud and hollering, cry like a. A child, but it's the truth. You have been spending this money without council approval. Just like you bought those trucks for the the one code of form that you weren't supposed to buy for, but you want everybody to approve what you want. So I'm gonna keep looking through this budget, Mr. Turner. I'll be back next meeting. So since I was muted out, I tried to mute you out, that that's the way it's gonna be. Uh the serial contract because things are sleeting that the council don't know about because I I'm beginning to think that what is happening is. If the council don't uh get the package in time or start reading in time, thanks thank me saying for getting the package to us on time. If we don't get them and start reading them, we'll be in the dark because it it's the stuff that's done in the in the in the in the heat of the night that we don't know about. But you were talking about this the sixty two thousand dollars for um. On page eighteen, and it's ninety thousand dollars for phone service for the water department. I'm trying to figure out what what is that about? So uh I'm I didn't try to start an argument. I'm just looking at this budget clearly.
And like I said, Mr. Franklin, I I don't have a budget in front of me right now, so I don't I don't mind at all giving you some more clarity uh. Each one of those line items, I'm just not able to do it right now.
And and I think to Mr. It it was not intended to be an argument. Every time I'm I'm I'm, you know. Just like when I asked the question in in the paper quoted it wrong, I asked you about those officers that we had. And I was clearly asking the question, the reason why we had this money, then I not answer this, Mr. The reason why we had this money, say. Is because we we didn't have officers in those positions, right? And that's it. So the newspaper company said, uh Mr. Kennedy said that I asked uh something else, but this is what I asked. And I'm and that's how we got this money. And my thing is this, I'm trying to make sure citizens understand because guess what? I only have the mic on Tuesday nights, every other Tuesday, so I gotta make sure people hear loud and clear, and I hope people report the news. The right way, loud and clear, that my goal is to make sure that I explain to people how we got that money. And anything else I see in this budget, I'm not trying to run day to day operations. I'm trying to look at finances. That's what uh that's one of the job as a council member is to look at property and finances, so I'm looking at the finances. And if I if I feel like something's not right, when the treasure report comes up, I'm gonna ask it over and over and over again until I get an answer. And Mr. I thank you, but I'm not I'm I'm not I'm not trying to play games. I'm trying to, if if the citizens. Somebody here to do a job, then guess what? I'm gonna do the job the best of my ability. But I don't know something, that's why we have a city ca- a city attorney. And we have other city council members that I can go and seek advice from who have been here longer than I have. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Franklin, like that, I don't have one problem at all from you or any other council members, anybody else uh asking about anything that's in the treasure report or the budget. So I welcome all questions. I wanna unlike you, I'd like to explain to people exactly what's going on and how the city is spending their money.
And I thank you, Mr. Turner, but that that uh IT service that we got, that's a serial contract. And I hate to be called a liar or misinformation, well, Mr. Turner, if it if if it if it's if it go month to month, what is that? If we go for, if if it went from uh June of last year to right now, is that a serious contract? That's a month to month contract right around.
I I think a serial contract or something. Well, I let Andre answer that.
Well, legally, Mr. Franklin, you're correct. I think this council's intent with that is is that if it's a contract for the same type of thing. Uh that the entire contract should be brought before the council to be bid it. And it shouldn't be broken up into a series. What the ordinance says shouldn't be broke up into a series, a smaller contract to bore the overall approval. So a serial contract from city council's language and what the understanding is, is so that the mayors wouldn't. Get ready to spend limit, spend four thousand nine hundred dollars and then come back next month and keep doing it, keep doing it, so that. And what you're really doing is defeating the spirit of the ordinance. And so that's why the language was added about a serial contract, so that there wouldn't be a series of contracts for the same service. The service that the city is receiving, in your example, most frankly, the services for IT. And that that is a entire series of of contracts. But really, it's for one thing, it's for the IT services for the city. So break it up into serial separate parts. If it's over five thousand dollars, uh the mayor cannot uh spend it. If it's over seventy five hundred, it should be bid it. Uh the issue with it is it is a professional service and then require bidding. And but it does acquire approval over five thousand dollars. Professional services would include IT services, it would include. Uh uh attorney services, it would include engineer services, account service, all those things. Those will have to go through bidding because uh you can't bid on that nature of thing. That's a matter of of professional doing a job. And that's the statute limits what professional services are. Uh but that being stated, five thousand dollars will be the limit. Anything above five thousand dollars would have to be bid it. And if it fall within the serial contract, uh then it still would have to bid it. So that's what you're speaking of more particular. Yes, the fact that it's over five thousand dollars. And I think uh in looking at the budget, what you just said. Was the seventy two thousand budget this year and that entire thing would have to be bid it, but going from company to company to company. Now, what the mayor's position has been in the past is he's more familiar with this than any of us. And what he said so many times out of his own mouth was that he has more experience than than most of us. And he thinks that's impractical to do it the way that council wants it done. And what he does is he says that 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 he does a month to month. Uh on it, cuz that's the way the business goes versus the way that we had it uh done in the past, what the city council had it done in the past. And so um with Franklin, that was the the overall. Uh that was the overall uh that was the overall. Uh understanding of it when when we it was brought up before. You've brought this up several times, but that was the. You've brought this up several times, but that was the discussing that you had with the mayor on the record, the previous council meetings, regarding to the nature of it. I don't think the council ever approved any IT services since Crystal Clear exclusion, solutions, to ask the most of Franklin's question directly. Uh, but it is something that probably should be uh approved by the city council. Uh, and with that, I yield to you, most turn on with Franklin, or whomever else wants to comment.
Well, Mr. Val, since we on that, I got, I got a quest, or maybe you can, I mean, I got a question. Um, about, okay, how does this work, when we are in an emergency? Uh, and and the mayor has to get a contractor or anybody he has to get. Uh, does the spending of limit goes out of the door, out the door, when we declare an emergency? Does that, uh, the the mayor?
The statute, that's that state statute, when the mayor declares an emergency uh to to handle whatever emergency it is, I previously emailed you all the statute on two occasions, rel- relating to what I explained it at the last, when the water emergency going on. The mayor does not have to follow our local policies during the the duration of that emergency. So the water emergency, anything that that he needs, any ordinance that he needs to 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 not comply with it or to get it thing done quickly. The emergency declaration authorizes him to do that, but he still cannot waive any state uh requirements. And so each time he declares an emergency, when we had the COVID emergency that was, that was in court twice. Uh, we had the water emergency, we had the Easter emergency, and we had this emergency for um for the inclement weather. When he does those uh during the duration of that, uh, for a thirty-day time period. All city ordinances that 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 uh that interfere with him effectuating uh getting everything done for the emergency uh 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 waived. And so if he needs to spend more than than five thousand dollars to handle something for this this inclement weather, that he's authorized to do so under his emergency declaration pursuant to state law, uh, for a period of thirty days. But the the inclement weather one is only, I think he did forty-eight hours, and I think he's gonna have to extend that because of the the two extra days of inclement weather we likely have, uh, he declared one for a hundred and twenty days on the water. And so, but the ordinance is by statute, it can only be waived for thirty days. So right now, and what he called me about it yesterday, and I talked to him about it yesterday, and I informed him that any spending he does according to the emergency, he needs to attach that to his proclamation or so that he, so that he would clearly display to the council what he spent, that he felt was related to reminiscing the uh re- remediation of the emergency, so that everyone have clarity as to yes, this was not going to, this did not comply with our ordinances as related to spending or or as related to whatever it would take. But here's the documentation what I've done, so that it will be, it won't be later, you're saying, well, what is exactly that you waived, what is actually you spending, how this related to, how this you made, so so it could be, there has to be some legitimacy to it, and I'm not saying that they're illegitimate, I'm saying there has to be clarity relating to it. And so that everyone would know what what within the parameter within which uh he was operating.
So, okay, thanks for that, so can I, can I, this is my next, so if it's, if it's, if if we have an emergency, can you pay? Uh, can you pay a person? Can you pay him before the job is done, or or can you just pay him, how can you, how do you pay the person? So, separately, it's just.
Well, payment typically is after the job is done, unless, there are some, there are some professional services, if you have to pay them something upfront. A professional services requires some payment upfront, um, some contract that requires some payment upfront, but the entire thing isn't paid until the work is 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 completely finished. And so it would depend, uh, I don't know what what specific, specifically you're going towards.
But, but I I, you know, this is, and I think that this, the 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 public should know. I I and I'm not, I mean, it, this is something I I, it is, I was gonna wait to talk about it. But I I, we paid somebody two checks, uh, to, I mean, maybe more than that. You know, and it was a ser- serious check, and I mean, it was thirty-five hundred dollars, one, one day, thirty-five, in the same day, the checks were cut. Thirty-five hundred dollars, boom, thirty-five hundred dollars, boom, seven thousand now. And 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 and, I mean, that's just my thing.
Mr. Franklin, you have a right to discuss that in detail, you had the right to ask the mayor, the treasurer, or the the city clerk about that. That is part of your job, and also, as I said earlier, when I talked to the mayor yesterday, I didn't talk to him about any specifics of spending, I talked to him about there need to be clarity, whenever you declare these emergencies as to, if you're waiving spending, what did you tie to this? And so everybody would have an understanding as to, here's my emergency order, here's the things that I spent, here's the way I didn't, didn't uh comply with the city ordinance. But I I was authorized to do so by by emergency order, so that everybody have an understanding as to what money was spent and how was spent. Uh, but I could email you again the statute, but I've I've emailed it to you twice, but the the statute just just says that in particular, but it could, it could only, while the emergency can only last a hundred and twenty days, the emergency waiver of city ordinances can only last for thirty days. And he still has to be in comply with the state law, so it couldn't go over twenty thousand dollars, uh, with the state uh spending without bidding.
Okay, uh, well, Mr. Turner, can you help me, I I would, if, if I could ask the city, city, uh, uh treasurer. Well, uh, and mayor, if you would, I see we got professional and uh legal for thirty-five hundred dollars twice, then I see again that, I mean, I think if, eh, then we got fifteen thirty-eight eighty-eight for professional service, but it's to a uh a bed and breakfast.
Well, if, if, I can answer some things on 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 legal, I know of three, I know of four or five legal issue have a monthly basis, you you've previously been updating approved contracts relating to uh my brother and the appearance of infapriety. Uh, James Valles, the attorney, just like I'm an attorney, and miss, the two deputy prosecutors are professional services
Right.
to deal with the appearance of infapriety relating to, I don't prosecute cases about my brother uh, cause appears as Friday, and the city council has proved contracts for Chalk Hospital and Amy. Excuse me, uh, and and when they approve those contracts, you also have ongoing contract with a title bound of land represented to the city, you all did mediation last week, uh, and you have another contract involving the landfill, uh, where uh, the city was, were waiting on them to sue uh for city and and other entities, same fresh county. Uh, that you all approved twenty-five thousand dollars last year on that, uh, because the trash was being diverted from from us, from the, tell them what's on the regional landfill, uh, to the Kritin County Regional Landfield. And so that legal issue, what you had, those are the ones I know as far as legal. Uh, I don't know about any other professional services, but I wanted to to speak with clarity on the issue that I knew of, that that we were paying someone, some other attorney to do something for the city. Of course, the municipal league is not professional services, it should be shown, Arkansas municipal league, that that rich man must to ring in while he works contracts with the municipal league, he's paid hourly by the municipal league and not by the city. And so when he was here today, he's he's on the train about Arkansas municipal league, and that's still covered by the the money that we just paid. We paid municipal league three thousand dollars per case that we um, when we do that. Yes, sir.
Uh, I wasn't talking about, nothing like that, I'm saying that we, we we have, we, so.
Well, I apologize, you said, you said legal, that's what maybe.
Mr. 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 Better, but thi- this is what this bill says, but it has nothing to do with you, though. This is legal and professional service, thirty-five hundred dollars, twice. This is what I'm I'm asking about, if that had nothing to do with you, this had to do with the hell in the water department. And 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 that, this is my thing, is that when we, when we, and and you know, I know we said, I know the mayor said he was gonna bring a former water manager, Jack Ross, back as a consultant, but how you pay somebody for they get here, send down now. Then you pay for their bed, bed, bed and breakfast, so was that, was this, this is fifteen hundred dollars.
If if it's over five thousand dollars, the the city council had to prove it, but if it's part of the but if it's part of the emergency, then then he would, he would have the details that's part of the emergency, I don't know what thirty-five hundred dollars is, I don't have that report in front of me, but but go ahead, Mr. Franklin.
And 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 that's my thing, I I, that's why I want to make sure, and I don't wanna jump the gun, that's why I'm I'm, you know, when you send me the uh emergency statute, I I wanna get some understanding of it, because see, this this the thing that I don't, it it, it it's just a problem that I have, that, you know, with the water department or within the department, that when you do stuff like this, keep your, keep your people in the know. Because, Mr. Val, when I say legal, this is what they got this uh labeled on, legal and professional service. What you should have put it on is consultant, if if he's gonna be the consultant, but you pay somebody to stand down, not consult something that, that that.
But that's, that's not, that's not under professional services statute, so statute has some specific things that are professional service. I I would, I would research that and give that to you, cause it's 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 cer- certain things that that are listed specifically in the statute of professional services.
Well, Mr. Val, I'm see, I'mma email you, I'mma scan, email you and the council as well, because these things, uh, it it it, this thing says pay to be is bed and breakfast, got the check number, uh, for fifteen thirty-eight eighty-eight. And then it's got another, it's got two, two checks for thirty-five hundred dollars, um, and it's two different check numbers. My thing is this, that send down now, well, I mean, you go, you must go consult the water department, get back on track right now. All the person, everything gonna be fixed, they should be fixed for send down, not everything, you should got that expected, but how can you get somebody to give you some insight on the water department when they, when they ain't got no license themselves? Now, that's that's daily operation, I'm sorry, I stepped on that, but that's what that is. I let the mayor figure it out, but I'm gonna send the council a copy of all this as well, because there's no trust. We we we, you know, there's no trust with this, I mean, the the the, the citizens send me here to do a job, I'm gonna investigate, I'm gonna find out what I need to find out. And I'm presenting, if it's wrong, then I leave you up to the, if I'm wrong, I apologize, I'm not too wrong about this. You know, I mean, it's just like, take, you take care of my friends, you know, and this is what this is, but I I I'm I'm done. But I make sure each member of the body has a copies, and Mr. Val, I make sure you get a copy, but uh, you know, this is two separate checks. Three separate checks, one for the the bed and breakfast, and a send down now, and then I guess we're gonna pay my, and guess there's part of paying my to get somebody here to tell you about your water system. And 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 it's wrong, but, you know, I'm I'm done, Mr. Better, I'm, I'm sorry, I I yield back to uh mayor, you can do what you do, but I'll bring this out. And I hope he don't spy nobody, but whatever.
I do not think the mayor is still online, I think that someone has to, one of your city council members has to be uh, the protea mayor to continue the meeting and go forward. Uh, I don't see him here and say that thing for a while, especially with all the things that Mr. Franklin has been saying. So, uh, will you all nominate someone for for uh mayor protea and and uh, so we can keep.
Mayor protea.
He texted, stated that he had lost connectivity.
Who the mayor?
Yes.
He lost no connection, that's, that's what you do when you know you're wrong.
Madam clerk, will you call the roll in it, please?
Forward.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Thank Columbia. Crockett.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Ethel Lee.
Uh, must, must Ethel, will you please take over the meeting from here?
Um, I I I don't even know what's left on the agenda at this point, but to the extent there is anything left on the agenda, if it's not uh urgent that we take it up, I would entertain a motion to table anything that remains and and adjourn.
Mr. uh Ethel Lee. I I didn't get an agenda, uh, I I'd like this, though, to be a part of the minutes, that I I request that we adhere to the ordinance, and I don't have the ordinance number right now, but it deals with the agenda and the council packs. And it says that we should have those packets by three P M on Saturday preceding the city council meeting. And I'd like to request that that go into a minute, and that we adhere to that, that we start getting our uh information in a timely manner.
Yes, ma'am. Are there any other items that are, that need to be taken up that are urgent, need to be taken up on this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't have my agenda in front of me, so so let me say this. Uh, is, are they, is anything on the agenda that needs to be tabled until the next meeting?
Nothing left on the agenda.
Okay, then, uh, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion, motion by David, second by Crockett, all in favor, say ah, ah. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.